Welcome, all of you, to our city council meeting today. If you would, I'd like to open with a prayer. Father, we do thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the blessings. Father, we thank you for this city. And, Father, our ability to govern. Father, to enjoy the Democrat, the democracy of the United States. Lord, I ask that you would be with us as we make decisions tonight. Father, that you would give us wisdom, give us discernment. And, Father, that we would make decisions that are best for our city. Father, I ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen. All the meeting to order, and let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've not seen anything in open forum, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove item B, please.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion on number five of the consent agenda?
I move, we accept the consent agenda, except, I didn't hear the item.
Item B?
Item B.
Except for item B.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, item 5B. Consider approval to purchase a John Deere 320 backhoe from Doggett Equipment, Utility Construction Manager. Mr. Mayor, City Council? Jason Smith, Utility Construction Manager. Do you have any questions specifically about that?
Just tell me what we're, I know I read in the background what we're replacing. What do you typically use it for? And what are the costs associated?
Yes, sir. Okay. We typically operate two separate backhoes in our department. And we kind of have them on about an eight to 10-year rotation for replacement, typical item for replacement at that timeframe. We replaced one unit last year. That was a 2013-year model, had roughly about 5,000 hours on it. And that's typically when we start looking at replacement. This unit is a 2014 model and is now at that 5,000-hour limit. So it's just replacement of an existing piece of equipment. Same size, same basic capacities. The cost on this one is approximately $138,000, which we did see a slight cost increase, but we had anticipated that. We budgeted $140,000, so we were right on target on that one. There's no major equipment or other things that are being purchased with this. This is just a standard backhoe with all the normal capacities and attachments. We are using, this is through Sourcewell, which is one of our cooperative purchasing agreements. So it is similar to Buy Board, but Sourcewell, in this particular instance, gives us a slightly better rebate and better pricing.
So one other question. I have no means for understanding the maintenance cost. But what typically on a backhoe would we spend in a year on maintenance costs when it was not working right?
Right. We have, which I haven't actually pulled that out, but just a standard 1,000-hour oil change is roughly $3,000. That's just for oil and hydraulic filter, hydraulic fluid. And we see about, you know, 400 to 500 hours per year. So we do one oil change per year, but every other year, it's a significant increase in cost. Having hydraulic cylinders replaced or repaired can be anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000. And so, once we get to that life cycle of about 5,000 hours, we see that those costs typically start to ratchet up quickly. These, this unit, we had about five of the hydraulic hoses changed on the rear cylinders and rear portion of this last year. And it ended up costing us about $5,000 to have all of those hoses replaced. So that's just a temporary typical maintenance item. It's like putting new tires on it. It's just eventually, they just start to wear out.
Good. That's all the questions I have?
The maintenance and upkeep, oil change, and et cetera is done in-house?
Actually, the way that our contract is typically just to keep, like, our warranties and agreements active with these. When we use Caterpillar equipment, we typically use Caterpillar to actually come and do the oil changes to keep our maintenance agreements up to date and our warranty periods. John Deere actually does allow for us to do oil changes ourself as long as we report all that information to them, instead of having to have them come and do it. So we may be able to save a little bit of cost in changing the brand of equipment in that service. But the hydraulic hoses, a lot of those are specific to that piece of equipment. And so, we have to purchase them through that supplier. So having it available at Doggett, which is a little bit closer than having to go to Tyler, to Caterpillar, to pick up those is better for the city in the long run.
What is the typical warranty on that?
The warranty on these is typically is five years. On the, on some of the components, once we get beyond five years, as long as we are keeping the maintenance agreement up to date, they do sell us the parts at a reduced rate if they see significant wear on those items. But it is not like a 10-year warranty. It's still a five-year standard warranty. But as long as they do a lot of the maintenance and upkeep, they do take that into consideration when we have major failures.
Five years, not hours? How many hours?
3,000, I think is what it said. Actually, the, yes, I believe on the warranty item, it is like five years or 3,000 hours. And so, we try to keep that hour range within that.
Thank you.
As close as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 5B.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason. So we will move on with our agenda. Pam is actually out today and has asked that we postpone 6A until our meeting on May the, May the 2nd. She has gathered some information, but she wants, she was wanting to gather some more, and she's continuing to work on that. So we're going to postpone that and move on to 6B. Public hearing, open a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 118, zoning Article 1 in general, Section 118-1, definitions in Article 3, district regulations, Section 118-273, land use schedule in Article 6, development standards, Section 118-466, off-street parking requirements of the Code of Ordinances to allow for the development of distillation of liquor, spirits, et cetera, craft. City Planner, hello?
Hello. Thank you, Mayor. Lena Hilton, City Planner. This is a staff-initiated amendment to our zoning ordinance in response to inquiries that we received about locating craft distillery-type businesses in Nacogdoches. Whenever we took a look at our ordinance, we realized that the zoning ordinance doesn't actually regulate craft distilleries. It does allow for large-scale beverage manufacturing in our industrial districts. But craft distilleries are a little bit different. They're a smaller operation. They typically allow for tours and tastings and attract tourists and a lot of pedestrian activities, so they're not necessarily appropriate in our heavy industrial districts. And this would be similar to like the microbrewery, like the Fredonia. And so, we thought that we would just go ahead and bring forward a change to allow these in more of our commercial areas with the protections of a specific use permit. So in this case, craft distilleries would be allowed in our industrial districts, but would require a specific use permit in our B2 and B3 districts to allow City Council to review those and impose any conditions if necessary, depending on the circumstances and surrounding properties. And so, that's just a quick summary of the reason why we're bringing this forward. And so, we'll get right into it. This, I didn't see a change on the, on the screen. Donnell, can they see that? Oh, I see it. It's a delayed reaction. Excuse me. So this definition comes straight from TABC, Texas Alcohol and Beverage Commission. And so, 1 and 2 come directly from that. And then, 3 is something that we use in a lot of our specific use permits about not producing or generating obnoxious odors or noise. So the next slide just shows you the change in the land use chart. So again, these would, we're proposing these be allowed in industrial and then require a specific use permit. And they would also include, again, a neighborhood meeting. So we would have a neighborhood meeting, get that feedback before even bringing it to PNC and City Council. This is the proposed parking ratio. This is the same parking ratio for beverage manufacturing or a lot of our other manufacturing uses. And then, the 1 per 100 would only apply to tasting rooms. We have concentration or gathering of people. And so, this is also similar to our other land uses with similar occupancies and activities. All right, so we did reach out to some other cities to see how they regulate these. City of Lufkin also allows craft distilleries in their industrial districts and requires a specific use permit in their downtown and commercial corridors. A lot of these other cities allow them by right in their downtown areas or their business districts, because historically, these were industrial areas or they just fell under general beverage manufacturing. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this request on April 10th and voted to approve the amendment unanimously. And so, with that, I'll conclude staff's presentation and open it up for questions from the council.
Okay. Let's talk, let's do public comment, please, for the public hearing on 6B. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this item? Okay. See, any council questions, comments? Who wants to begin? Mr. Huckabee, you're looking like you do.
I didn't necessarily want to begin, but I will. So I, again, watched the planning and zoning meeting. And I heard that they poked fun at me a little bit before that, because we had had that discussion with, I'd had that discussion with several commissioners. My first question is related to where our industrial districts are, just generally, in the city, where those would be allowed by right. And also, generally, where our B2 and B3 districts.
Yeah, so a lot of our industrial districts are along the south portion of University Drive. That's where you see a lot of the big manufacturing plants, Pilgrim's Pride, things like that. And then, on the far north, north, kind of, I guess northwest side of town, where we have some plants and more heavy industrial uses. B2 would be, think of about North Street, South Street, north portion of University Drive. B3, of course, is the downtown area. And so, these are more of our kind of pedestrian-oriented commercial activities.
And that was going to be my second question. Craft distilleries are going to perform better in areas where you can have foot traffic, right?
Yes. Because the idea is they have a pedestrian drawl, tourist attraction. And so, you want to have them in an environment where people are comfortable visiting. And that's not necessarily our heavy industrial areas.
My last one for now is, I know we've had some inquiries about this sort of business. Are they soft inquiries, hard inquiries? Is this a change that's being made to help someone get in? Or what's the situation there?
It was a soft inquiry. They were just looking at potential locations in Nacogdoches. And then, we realized, oh, well, they're only allowed in these heavy industrial areas. And so, we haven't received any, you know, really hard inquiries. But this triggered us to try to be preemptive and go ahead and make that change ahead of time. So we would be ready.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all for now. Okay. Mr. Bowman, anything?
And you stated, and I'm not sure, the manufacturing is, even now, we could do a distillery in an industrial area, right?
Yes, and it would fall under the.
Without any stop, anything.
Correct.
But if it was going to be where it operated as tourism, then it could be in B2 and stuff.
Yeah, so a craft distillery essentially is beverage manufacturing. But these typically have smaller operations. They sell directly to the consumer versus, you know, think about R and K distributors, where you don't really have people coming in and out of the facility. Yes, today by right, they could locate in Nacogdoches, but they would have to be in a heavy industrial or a light industrial district.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bellinger?
I have a few questions. Okay. Is there a particular distillery that's looking at it, that's in our area, and they're looking at relocating? Is that what I heard you say?
The particular entity that we heard from, I had never heard from. It's like a new, it would be a new business, not one that you'd become, that you would be familiar with. So not front porch distillery or, but with this change, they could maybe open a second location in Nacogdoches or something like that. But the answer to your question, no. It's not any business that I've heard of, it would be a new business.
So where are you thinking it would be appropriate, just in general?
Well, we actually visited with our Main Street Department and Historic Sites, and they think this would actually be a good tourist draw for the downtown area to create more of an entertainment, lifestyle type of venue. But it also could also be appropriate on University Drive or North Street. And the specific use permit adds those additional protections to make sure that it doesn't have any kind of adverse impacts on adjacent properties.
And has the downtown, a planning committee thought, discussed this? I haven't, I know.
Well, I think Amelia's on your.
Yeah, right.
I am. Not this specifically. We have discussed expanding entertainment options downtown. And based on my experience in the meetings, it would seem like the committee, like this would be something that the committee would support.
That's, that was my question. Is the committee in line with that? I wouldn't want to step around or whatever.
I think so. And Ms. Betty Shin is here, and she's also an active participant in our downtown committee and may want to speak to it or contradict. She does not. She agrees with everything that I said. Okay.
And my only other question is, I know you put in obnoxious odors. I guess they don't make a lot of noise. I have no idea what distilleries.
Well, they can, but typically, the, I think typically, the odors have been more typical for associating, you know, those nuisances with that versus the noise. So any land use like this would have to comply with our performance standards, which have limitations on noise and vibrations and obnoxious odors for any land use. And so, we just wanted to make sure we included it in there so it's explicit and crystal clear that that was a provision.
So, I'm sorry, frog in my throat. Our noise ordinance would cover it? Or does our noise, do we have different noise ordinance for businesses versus the?
So, and the zoning ordinance, the noise ordinance applies to commercial activity in close proximity to residential areas. So specifically, a residential district that's close to a commercial area, that's where it triggers. We have other noise ordinances that aren't zoning-specific. But one of the zoning ordinance specifically applies to proximity to residential areas.
And one other question. How long have you been working on this?
Just a couple of weeks.
Just a couple of weeks with redoing the ordinances and stuff and drafting them?
So, again, it was in response to an inquiry from that potential business. And so, we just went ahead and placed it on the agenda. We took a look at what we did for the microbrewery change back in 2006 and just tried to reflect that as much as possible, because it is a very similar land use. And so, it's not something that we've been working on for a long time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would just, one of the items that Councilmember Bellinger, obnoxious odor, doesn't that follow, honor the EPA guidelines? And we would have to follow their guidelines?
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with the EPA guidelines. Again, in our ordinance, obnoxious odors and loud noise applies to all commercial activities that are in close proximity to residential areas. I'm sure those provisions are probably reflected of some sort of state requirement that we adopted, but I don't have that information offhand. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
I had one more come up while I was listening to my colleagues. I know that with the comprehensive plan discussion, we've discussed in general the idea that we will need to rewrite our zoning ordinance. How does this fit into that discussion? Is now the time? Or, I'm not saying it's not, but put that in the context of we're probably going through a full rewrite at some point in the near future.
Yeah, so one of the recommendations that we anticipate seeing out of the comp plan is an audit of our development code to see if our development code actually allows for the type of things that are, that's going to come out of the comp plan, type of housing, the type of development. Does your code actually allow for those type of things? Or so, do you need to change it? So the audit will include an analysis of our development code, including, you know, design guidelines, subdivision standards, sign requirements. So it'll be a more comprehensive evaluation of all of our development standards together versus this is just, I think, something quick that I don't anticipate being affected by that audit.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Do I have a motion on 6B?
I move that we approve item 6B as written.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, move to 6C. Thank you for that presentation. Consider approval of an indefinite deliverables, indefinite quantities contract by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Dupla Chain Contractors LLC for utility installation and repair services in a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000. Assistant Director of Public Works, hello. How are you tonight?
Doing fine. Mayor, City Council, Case Offerman, Assistant Director of Public Works. Just a little background, City Utility Construction Department employs several in-house crews to take care of utility line repairs and, you know, sewer collect, on water, sewer, throughout our utility network. Here recently, we've had some staffing challenges. We've had several employees leave for other opportunities. We've, at the same time, had increasing workload demands. And that has caused us to kind of back up and look at how we operate. And so, one of the, one of the things we've come up with is getting on-call help from a utility contractor. We've talked about doing this in the past. The situation we found ourselves in kind of moved us forward and pulling that trigger at this point in time. So we went out and solicited proposals from utility contractors in the area. This, or this contract would basically help us shore up our staffing and respond to these unforeseen issues that we, that we have quite often. And so, this would be an IDIQ contract, which is essentially an on-call contract to help respond to time-sensitive repairs as well as kind of avoid any procurement issues that we would have in reacting quickly. On March 30, we received these proposals. We only had one response. It was from Dupla Chain Contractors. No strangers to us here. They actually take care of a lot of our emergency repairs when we can't get to them ourselves. If they're bigger than what we can handle or if we just don't have the resources to handle them at the time, Dupla Chain is who we get a hold of quite a bit of the time, anyway. So we were happy to receive their proposal. We did go ahead and score them, even though we had only one proposal. And city staff separately and independently graded them on a standardized grading form. They scored 294 out of 300 possible points. So they're definitely well-equipped to handle this contract for us. They are from Alto, if you haven't heard of them before. And as I said, they've responded and helped us a lot in the past on this type of thing. So this contract will be an estimated $200,000 a year. We're just going to work against that budget. We may not use it all, but we're, we've got it to use. $100,000 of that will come out of our water line repair budget. And the other half will come out of our wastewater repair budget, which we have in the CIP. Just a point of note, it's not in your agenda sheet, but we will provide material as often as possible for this. They will just provide equipment and manpower to handle this. So we shouldn't, most of the time, as long as we've got the material, we won't be paying up charge on using their materials. And so, that'll be, that'll be a good way for us to mitigate our costs as much as we can. With that, I would entertain any questions after public comment.
Is there any comment from the public on this item? Okay. Council? Councilmember Bellinger, we'll start with you this time. Any questions?
I do. I have a couple.
Okay.
So first of all, they didn't, they lost some points in the hourly rate. Would you have preferred a different hourly rate? Or what was?
You know, I can't speak to everybody else's score. I personally gave them 100. Actually, the cost was at a 50, but yeah, it's just, you know, the hourly rate was, was fine in my mind. It wasn't outrageous. We'll pay a little elevated rate just because it's not planned work. You know, they, under this contract, are required to respond within 48 hours in normal scenarios and in an emergency to respond immediately or as close to immediately as possible, within probably four hours or so. So we probably will, you know, have just a little bit of, you know, markup for that. But it wasn't, it wasn't out of whack at all.
My, my next question is, it seems like these are ongoing costs we have, right? That the wastewater, but it, but you're saying it's coming out of the CIP, capital improvements? Are we, are we budgeting for that in our yearly budgets? Or?
Yes. We've got, we've got budget for water and sewer, actually, in the CIP under a line that's actually called line repairs, miscellaneous line repairs and installations. So it's, it's actually where we spend money for Dupla Chain to go out and do an emergency break anyway. So it's our attempt to have some money set aside for things that we do know will occur. We don't know how much, but we know that we've got old infrastructure. And so, we know we will have repairs to make on water and sewer, so.
So it's just a normal part of our, and we have budget.
It is. And it's not even our full budget. We just figured on a couple hundred thousand dollars to try and get us through.
And then, I know several times, we only get one response. Is there a way, and this is a general question for across the board, is there any way we can get more responses to our RFPs or whatever we're letting?
And I can, there's a couple of answers to that concern. One, we sent them out to, one, let me back up. On this contract specifically, we needed people in the area. Because if we're trying to have an on-call contractor, we need somebody who can get here within a reasonable amount of time. So while it might be great to have a response from Dallas, it's not practical for us to hire them for an on-call contract. But we did send them to all of our utility contractors in this area that we have used historically. And Dupla Chain was the only response. But I did talk to one other, who I won't name. But he called me and he was asking me questions about the bid. And he said, "Look, my concern is, I don't even have enough people for my own jobs. And having to not know when you're going to call me and be able to schedule work is something I can't really do right now." And so, you know, it's perfectly reasonable response. And so, I know that that is some of what prevented some of the others from responding. I didn't talk to everybody, but I could see that being an issue. As far as responses on projects in general, what we try to do is advertise through an online bidding platform called CivCast on jobs. And that, that gets the word out better than just advertising in the newspaper or sending it to the contractors that we have contact information for, which we do that, too. But that kind of gets the word out, and a lot of contractors just subscribe to these platforms. And so, that can generate more responses. But even then, we're, we're still not seeing a dozen responses on our bids. A lot of times, we're only seeing two or three, maybe four. So.
Well, that makes sense. I mean, it's part of being rural and.
It is.
Appreciate your, your work.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman, you have anything?
The $200,000, is that material? You stated we provide the material.
We would provide the materials as often as possible. Yes, sir. Now, if we, if there was an abnormally sized pipe that we didn't have on hand and they did happen to have it in their yard, well, then, we would ask them to bring it with them. Especially since pipe and other things like that are difficult to come by right now. We would definitely buy it from them, but we would try to have it, materials on hand as much as possible for them to just load up their equipment and come. And here, we'll, you know, we'll drop the pipe off at the, at the site, and you just put it in.
Normally, on-call labor is a higher price than regular. Normally, on-call labor is a higher price than regular labor.
Yes, sir.
And it's built in, like, from the manager on down to the hourly worker. And it's, they base it on an average on, on, most private industry does that.
Yeah, they just got to make sure they're not going to overextend themselves and commit to something that's going to wind up costing them money in the long run.
Thank you. So one of my first questions is, we got one response, we still scored. How many people scored?
We did three.
Okay. That was, also, in addition to that, we're approving the contract, but the contract wasn't in the packet.
Okay, should have been, but, yeah, it's, it's our standard. Yeah, I apologize for that, I thought it was. But it's our standard, just on-call IDIQ contract that we've done in the past.
I don't know that we've done one since I've been on council. So if you could just send it to me when you get a chance.
Yeah, we did, it's the same contract we do for the electricians and the instrumentation guys and all, and all that other stuff. But I do apologize for that, I thought it was in there.
Perfectly fine. So we're, we have this money budgeted in CIP in the utility fund. How much do we typically spend on line repairs in a given year?
Well, it's hard to say, every year is different. You know, we had, we had a line repair a couple of months back that we called Dupla Chain on in an emergency, and I think the bill was $70,000. So just one break. Now, as far as what we do in-house on a weekly basis, I, I don't honestly have a metric for that, because it's just something they're always doing.
Right.
But, you know, it could easily be a couple of hundred thousand dollars. We, we figured 200 was a good starting point, especially since it's, we're not committing to spending all of that. But it could, it could easily wind up to be in the $100,000 range or, or more. And if we needed a, hopefully, we wouldn't need more than 200,000, but.
That was my next question. Is there an option in the contract to do beyond the 200,000 if, if we approve that?
It, it would, yeah, require a budget amendment, but, I would assume. Maybe Mr. Kirkland has a different idea?
You would probably, depending on how much additional you need to do, it would probably come back to council.
Okay. I think that's all for now, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, do I have a motion on six C?
Make a motion, we approve item six C as presented.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, thank you for that. We'll move to six D. Consider approval of a contract between White Electric and the City of Nacogdoches for festival park utility upgrades in the amount of $106,350. Community Service Director, Mr. Bray, how are you tonight?
Doing well, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council, your Community Services Director, Brian Bray. So the item before you this evening is part of a bigger item. We broke it down into two parts. So in your CIP that was, in our, rather, CIP that was approved this year, we have $350,000 for downtown and festival park utility upgrades. And when staff looked at that item, we decided that it made a lot more sense to break it into two phases. And so what you have before you this evening is essentially phase one. And that is just for festival park utility upgrades. So the map we have there in front of you, and was in your packet, the red dots are all of the current electrical locations, and the blue are the current water locations. I'm sure all of you have been to the Blueberry Concert, excuse me, Blueberry Festival, Bluegrass Concert, a concert down there, a Fourth of July event. And when you've been down there, if you kind of remember, almost everything was centered around Fredonia. Because if you look at the map, you can see that's really where the power is located today. But then also, it was clustered, because we don't, you can't run a 200-foot extension cord and run something. And so most of the events, the booths, were located down Fredonia. So we went to Army Curtis, and we worked with Army Curtis and an electrical engineer. And we are not adding additional power in Festival Park. We are, and, and mind you, I'm not an electrician, so I, I speak in kind of the general terms. We had a bundle, and we just stretched it out. We didn't add any more to it. So the kind of Christmas tree light you see on the left-hand side is that same electrical that we had down there, but dispersed, to where we now will have, if approved, essentially, an RV pedestal that has a 30 amp and two 110 amp plugs, 30 feet apart, running all the way down Fredonia Street. And then on the east side of Pecan until you get to Cox. And then we jump over, and then we run down the west side of Pecan on Cox. And on the other side is distribution of the water. You know, most food trucks do not need water. They come with a water tank full. But we wanted to be able to, should someone create a food truck event that's a two-day event, well, those food trucks are going to need access to water. So we spaced the water spigots out every 60. So it's essentially every other outlet for electrical will have the capability of having water. So we advertised this on March 8th, and we opened bids on March 23rd with two respondents, White Electric and Ludco, with White Electric being the low bid at $106,350. And Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after a public comment.
Great, thank you. Any public comment regarding this item? Okay. Council, questions and comments? Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Bolden always asks a question like this, but I'm going to steal it from him. That's a $100,000 difference in estimates. Do you have any idea why, just out of curiosity?
No, ma'am, I do not. Army Curtis looked at that. Let me see, I don't think he addressed it in his letter.
No, not that I saw.
He did not, no, ma'am. Because he was looking at White Electric to see if it was an appropriate bid. And we didn't, I, I did not ask him to go back and say, why is Ludco so much higher?
That's all.
Let's go back to the red and blue dots. On the electrical.
Yeah.
The feed, I mean, you're not generating another power panel? You're working off the same power panel?
Correct, yes, sir. So on, on this map right here, for example, that bottom, the very bottom dot, and I can't, the numbers are too small for me to read from here. But they are redistributing that existing amperage to more outlets.
Right, without enlarging the wiring.
Yes, sir, that's correct. There, we're going to remove the existing upright panel that's there and bury it, bring it underground, and then redistribute it as it pops up.
More breakers.
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That was my question, more breakers.
Glad you didn't ask a real electrical question, since I'm not the electrician.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, anything?
I wish I were brilliant to ask a real electrical question, just to see. I have no questions, thank you.
I have just a couple. And Councilmember Fisher stole my, my thunder, and Mr. Bolden's, apparently. Because I was going to ask the same thing, did they really just not want the bid that badly? That's, that's usually what I think, if you bid so high that.
I would tell you, the Ludco came to the bid opening, so I doubt that that was the case.
Interesting. My next question, can we go back to the previous slide, please? So with these additional outlets, do we generate revenue from this? Do we charge people to use this electricity and water? How does that work?
We do not. So it is a service for festivals and Festival Park.
Gotcha, makes perfect sense, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion on six D?
I move to approve item six D.
Thank you.
Second?
Second, second, thank you. Any more discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, that concludes that part of our regular agenda. It is 6:09, and we will adjourn to our executive session and be back after that. Thank you for being with us tonight. We are back from executive session at 7:42 concerning section 551.072 and 551.074. Is there any action to be taken? I'd make a motion that we extend Mr. Kirkland's contract through June 1 of 2025. No other changes?
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. I realized that in the last email, that we might have been expected to vote on a contract renewal at this time. And my apologies, but I had assumed that we would, because of Open Meetings Act, have a discussion about the kinds of questions we were asking about the process that we were using. I assumed that because we used a much longer process and discernment process with the city manager's evaluation. We had at least two, if not three, executive sessions. And I believe this process is being very rushed.
Okay, anyone else? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.